Good evening, I want to make a motion that the meeting be called back to order at 6:37.
So moved.
Second.
Now, I'd like you guys to rise for the clerk to lead us. The judge will lead us. Can I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approves the October 21st, 2025 agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Okay, can I please have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approves the resolution to waive the second reading to mid the bylaws of 1510 dash, I mean period 1 as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor, none opposed? And so now I'm going to turn it over for superintendent's report.
Thank you, Board President.
We need to approve something.
Oh.
Resolution needs to be approved.
Oh, sorry.
Put it on your computer.
Yeah.
I apologize, guys, my laptop is not up yet.
We'll trade.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approves the resolution to adopt the revised vision of, the revised version of Board of Education Policy 1510-1 as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor, none opposed? And so now we will move on to superintendent, so superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. As part of my report this evening, I want to take a minute to just introduce who will be joining me and supporting me as part of the superintendent's report. I have with me this evening Dr. Dan Dripfo, our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance, Mr. Ted Wilson, our Safety and Security Coordinator, I have Lieutenant Bay, Captain Kreiser, and Deputy Thurston from Monroe County Sheriff's Office. So I'm going to kind of walk you through some of the things that have been of concern in our district, and I want to start with the incident from September 18th. And before we start to go into this report deeply, I want to acknowledge the concerns of our families, of our faculty, and some of our staff regarding the September 18th student incident. Please know that the district also shares those concerns. I also want to be extremely clear that at no point did the district take the threat lightly. I want the community to know that I care about the safety of our students, our faculty, and our staff, and safeguarding our district has been and will continue to be my highest priority. As the leader of our school district, I took all of the necessary steps to secure our district, which I will further describe as part of my report this evening. There have been some concerns raised questioning the district's transparency, and I wanted to share with you the definition of transparency. It's the visibility or accessibility of information especially concerning. Unfortunately, in this situation, the most common questions that the district was asked that the district also could not answer were, is the student under observation? Who is the student? What grade is the student? If, when, will the student be returning to school? What are the consequences that the student received? So that was the transparency that folks were seeking, and unfortunately, the district cannot share any details, any student details, in our district. We are legally obligated to follow our student privacy laws, which means we must protect the privacy of all of our students, all of the students that we are responsible for. So there was no place throughout this whole situation was the district able to answer those questions. So I'm going to kind of walk through questions and provide the answers throughout this report. So what was reported on September 18th? It's important for me to share that the detailed facts that I communicated with the community were the facts as I received them, so that every member of our community understood what we knew and the information that we had as soon as we received it. I also want to clarify that the district did not conduct or facilitate this investigation. This investigation in its entirety was facilitated by the New York State Police. We relied on the information that was provided to us directly by the investigator from the New York State Police, including the specific language that was used to describe whether or not the threat was credible. So as referenced earlier, the district cannot share specific details regarding how the district held the student accountable. So the next question is, how does the district hold students accountable for behavior? Our district relies on our code of conduct and support. In instances such as this, the code of conduct outlines specifically that tier three behaviors that involve targeted interventions and responses when a student's behavior presents an imminent threat of serious harm to the school community and/or the educational process and/or when documented interventions and supports have been ineffective. So in this case, we ask, what are the administrative level interventions and responses for tier three behaviors? So as you see listed here on our screen, our district in instances such as these can consider and also apply any of these tier three responses or interventions. We can refer to our district behavioral intervention team. We can refer to the Committee on Special Education or 504. We can refer to Trauma, Illness, and Grief, our TIG team. We can suspend up to five days out of school. We can request for a superintendent's hearing. If we request for a superintendent's hearing, this may result in a long-term suspension. We partner with community-based supports. We partner with outside law enforcement agencies, as we did in this instance. We develop a re-engagement plan in partnership with student and family for return to the classroom. Though we have this list, this list represents just some of the many ways that we can hold students accountable. The next question, what communications did the district share about the threats? For those families within our district, you would know specifically the detailed communications that came directly from the district. Those communications came to families and faculty and staff on the same day that we were notified. When we were notified, we communicated internally, we also communicated externally. On the 19th, once we had additional information, we communicated again with our faculty, our families, our community. On September 21st, which was a Sunday, I met virtually with our principals and the senior cabinet to provide an update. I also met with board leadership. I also engaged in a conference call with legal counsel. On Monday, September 22nd, there was a voluntary safety and security update meeting for faculty and staff within our schools. Also on the 22nd, another communication was shared with families. On October 1st, I shared a detailed plan with the Board of Education around updates to our safety and security, security plan and protocols. And then on October 3rd, another communication was shared directly with families and faculty and staff, answering the questions that we had received, providing FAQ, frequently asked questions. So what was the communication from the New York State Police regarding the investigation? A full statement was shared after the district was notified from the New York State Police. This statement was referenced to include their explanation that there was no indication of an imminent threat to any school within the Penfield Central School District. How is the district continuing to support families? We did have families reach out to the district, asking what information we could provide them to support talking with their children about the increased presence that we had on our school campuses. As a result, I drafted a communication for families, and I sent that communication to Dr. McGee, our Assistant Director of Programs, and Mrs. Green, our district social worker, to review and to ensure that a mental health lens was applied. Once this was finalized, Dr. McGee sent this communication to the principals so that principals could share with families. We wanted to make sure that there was information to support as a result of the feedback that we had received around this. Somewhere around October 14th and 15th, building principals sent this communication out to our families within the district. So now I want to reference our last Board of Education meeting on October 7th. I want to clarify and provide context regarding the details related to that meeting. Why wasn't there a public comment period during the October 7th, 2025 Board of Education meeting? Per our bylaw, during public comment, speakers may comment on matters related to district educational programs, business, and operations as provided for on the meeting agenda. For that meeting, no individual signed up to provide public comment on items related to the agenda. This evening, the Board of Education has just approved a revision to the bylaw. So moving forward, upon the approval, meetings going forward, we have revised the language to include all items that anyone wants to speak on can and will be a part of public comment for future meetings. The next question, why didn't the district respond to the parent before or during the board meeting that took place on October 7th? Concerns that were raised by that parent were acknowledged by the district before and after the meeting. I received an email communication on September 25th, which I responded, excuse me, I responded to the email on September 25th. I responded to the second email on September 26th. The board clerk responded to email number three on October 6th. The board clerk responded to email number four on October 7th. On October 9th, the parent stopped by the district office requesting to meet with me. I was in schools, visiting schools during this time, and I was not available. On October 14th, I asked my administrative assistant, my executive assistant, which is also our board clerk, to reach out to the family to schedule an in-person meeting, which has been scheduled. So now I want to talk about student safety guiding principles. Our guiding principles include a student-centered approach, which we ensure that all students learn in a safe and supportive environment, it's compliance-oriented, we adhere to all federal, New York State, and local safety and security mandates. Our guidelines are proactive and preventative. We identify risks early and respond effectively to prevent escalation. We are collaborative. We partner with our staff, our families, our law enforcement, and community partners. We are consistent, we maintain clear roles, expectations, and accountability across all of our schools, and we maintain a physical and visible presence on school campuses, prioritizing each campus for our arrival, our dismissal, and our other high-traffic times in collaboration with our Monroe County Sheriff's Office and Black Hawk Security. Who is responsible for safety in the district? So as the superintendent, I hold the responsibility to ensuring that our district has safety and security at the forefront of all that we do. I approve our annual emergency response plans, and I receive regular updates. In addition, our new safety and security infrastructure was designed and implemented as a result of the superintendent's office in partnership with our Safety and Security Coordinator. Our Safety and Security Coordinator directly supports all of the security staff, oversees our safety protocols, our drills, our TAP app, security system, the visitor management system, our training, investigations, and partners with law enforcement. Our security workers, we currently have three security workers who provide supervision, support of our sentries, supports our building administration in implementing emergency procedures, conducts facility rounds, monitors our access points, and maintains drill compliance. Our sentries, we have one at each of our elementary schools, we have eight at Bay Trail, we have an allocation for 10 sentries at Penfield High School, and they are the first line of visibility in our schools. They monitor our entrances, our hallways, our public areas, and they help to maintain a secure environment in our schools. They monitor daily activity, traffic, arrival, dismissal, safety, and visitor verification. They also deter disruptive behavior and maintain secure access in our schools. And then lastly, our district has a mental health team leader that supports our district with our Trauma, Illness, and Grief team, our Behavioral Intervention Team helps to support the management of threat assessment and our Safe Schools processes when families or students send information to the district sharing that they have a concern about safety. How is the district working to ensure student safety? We are continuing to be proactive in identifying and addressing the risks before they escalate through our internal Behavioral Intervention Team, which is our BIT, and our partnership with Forensic Intervention Team, our FIT, families, staff, law enforcement, and community organizations. The Forensic Intervention Team is a program of Monroe County Office of Mental Health. On our BIT team, we have Deputy Todd Thurston that sits on our team regularly and a member from Monroe County Office of Mental Health. So now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ted Wilson, our Safety and Security Coordinator.
Good evening. I'm just going to touch briefly on a couple of these areas here. Like the superintendent said, our access control is done through one main entrance, which is our main entrance through the front doors there. Every visitor that checks into any of our schools must produce a New York State valid ID so we can run them through our ID verification system. Now, once the students are in, doors are, all the doors are locked, and there's multiple checks throughout the day to make sure that no doors are unlocked. We do our best to triple-check every day, all day, even after the students have left for the day. We also make sure we go around and check these doors to prevent unwanted visitors into our schools. Now, there's multiple times, I know from the high school because that's where my office is based out of, multiple times in the morning, the sentries there, they're always checking doors, even before lunch, after lunch, and again in the evening. Now, a little bit about our emergency communication system, which is our TAP app, which is a crisis management, emergency communication app, alright? The unique thing about this app is, that I like, is that anytime if there's any lockdown scenario or situation, this lockdown will go immediately to the Sheriff's Department, all of their command cars, not just Penfield cars, but it goes to Chi-Lite cars, Henrietta cars, so it goes to all of the Sheriff's Department cars. Also, we know during a lockdown scenario, it's imperative that the students and staff are as quiet as possible, so getting on the radio is not the best idea. So with this emergency app, new emergency app, there's a feature that allows staff to text each other, and also, once they're texting each other, those texts immediately go right to the Sheriff's Department's cars, so they're seeing what, in real time, what we're seeing. Student behavior and support. Now, when we talk about student behavior and support, like the superintendent mentioned earlier, our sentries are our frontline presence for our students' safety when they come in each and every day in the buildings. That visible presence helps deter negative behavior. It also gets the staff, it gives the staff the ability to get to know these students. Also, sentries that deal with these students every day, they're always, the ones that I deal with, they're always encouraging these students to do their best, and if they have any issues or problems, they know they can come to a sentry and bounce things off that sentry. Emergency drills and preparedness. Now, when we talk about our emergency drills and preparedness, by law, we have to complete eight, annually, excuse me, annually, we have to complete eight evacuations and four lockdown drills and one early dismissal. Each and every time after we conduct those drills, there's always room for us to critique ourselves, that way we know what went right, what went wrong, okay? During our lockdown drills this year, we simultaneously conduct our lockdown drills in each building together. Our partnership with first responders, there's always an ongoing collaboration with the Sheriff's Department, Brighton Police Department, and the state police. Also, we also regularly, not regularly, but we do have the luxury of contacting or having contact with our fire department and our emergency medical services as well, and they also participate in our countywide safety drills. Now, when we talk about training and professional development, this is about long-term growth for our employees, which helps them grow in their careers, and this can include certifications, conferences, and workshops. And when I talk about long-term, excuse me, long-term growth, it's about always training, what can we do better, okay? Just want to reiterate something. When I became part of the security staff here at Penfield Central School District, I realized that the sentries were called hall monitors at the time, which was very antiquated, and it did not highlight or reflect the work that the men and women do each and every day throughout our school district. So I was tasked with getting the sentries, or the hall monitors at the time, some more training, which we did. We also transitioned that name from hall monitors to sentries, and they did receive training, which was an eight-hour, excuse me, eight-hour guard training, and also a 16-hour on-the-job training through the Black Hawk Training Facility. Now, a little bit about the training that they went through. The sentries were able to understand what their security role would be as a sentry, their powers, they understood and went through conflict, problem resolution, legal aspects, what constitutes an offense. Also, they talked about escorts, public relations, and also emergency readiness, which in my mind, it promotes order and structure because we always have to be prepared for any scenario. They also went through communication, public relations, and they understand that knowing their location is paramount because in event of emergency situation, they need to know their land, their respective buildings. Now, as part of their 16-hour on-the-job training, which they went through, they learned report writing. Also, they did foot patrols, which they do every day at the schools. They're walking around, checking doors, checking parking lots. Also, they observed, they did an observation exercise, which it only strengthens their observation skills, and they know what to look for when they're checking our surveillance system or if they're out in the parking lot dealing with a student or a visitor. Also, they went through some, excuse me, interviewing interrogation techniques as well. So as we continue to build our security infrastructure, our internal infrastructure, I know that there's always room for improvement, and we're always open for ideas. We're always looking to see things from a different set of lenses, and we just want to get better, and it's all about protecting the staff and the students every day, all day.
You're not done, you're not done. Turn of the page.
So I want to talk about, a little bit about immediate response. There's a chain of command in our security staff. Sentries notify our security workers and administrators and Safety and Security Coordinator, which is myself, when there's a situation in any of our buildings. And after that, containment is always key, containment of the, and safety. So staff, we react very quickly in every building to activate our emergency plans if needed. Now, the communication piece is that when there's a situation, faculty and staffs, excuse me, faculty and staff will send out communication to families via Parent Square and constantly give updates, and that is done through Nancy Bradstreet, our Director of Communication, and the superintendent, Dr. Potter. So as we deal with that situation, our after-action, there's always a follow-up for that. So again, we always try to understand how can we do better, what went wrong, and what can we do to make the future better? So we always do reports, we document incidents regularly, and we always attempt to strengthen our future responses.
So our next question is, how is the district working to improve security? The district will be hiring additional security workers to provide coverage at each of our elementary schools. We currently have security worker at Penfield High School, Bay Trail Middle School, and the Bay Trail Middle School, we are looking at that and Scribner. and the Bay Trail Middle School, we are looking at that and Scribner being one campus. So, they're currently supporting that campus. We also, our third security worker, we have permanently placed at Cobble's. So, there was an increase to the support there at Cobble's. And we're in the process, because we've posted for this position, we are looking to hire two more so that we can make sure that there is coverage at both Harris Hill and at Indian Landing. So, the next question is, will the district be hiring SROs or armed guards? At this time, the district will not be implementing SROs or armed guards in each of our schools. Research and best practice guidance in school safety demonstrate that a layered approach provides the most effective means of keeping students safe. A layered approach includes strong prevention programs, trained security personnel, close partnerships with law enforcement, and emergency preparedness protocols. The next question that's asked often, what are the Black Hawk Security and Investigations credentials and qualifications? I'll start by just saying that Black Hawk has been a wonderful partner to the Penfield Central School District. They have been patrolling the grounds of each of our campuses since last spring and they continue to do that throughout the day. I'll start with background checks. Black Hawk, all of their personnel undergo background checks through the New York State, the FBI, and the Department of Education as required for working in schools. They follow Article 35 of the New York State Penal Law, Defense of Justification, which outlines the circumstances under which the use of physical force is legally justified. All of the guards are armed and authorized to use their weapons only when their life or the life of another person is in danger. Guards receive training in weapon retention, use of force, and school-based incident response. Every guard brings substantial experience, including responded to school-related incidents. Black Hawk personnel undergo required training and regular oversight from the district via Mr. Wilson's office to ensure compliance with our district protocols. The next slide, I'm going to ask Dr. Driffl to speak to.
So, traditionally in the district, we utilized a bid process for security services. Although we didn't have the layered approach to security that we currently have, we would rely upon these security services when needed. So, large events, different night patrols, things like that. It was really a commodity-based service. Here, the standard services provided at the standard rate. This year, there was a desire to expand the scope of services. It really evolved into a professional services arrangement. So, it expanded beyond the commodity-based X person here, Y person there, and really, like Dr. Potter and Mr. Wilson mentioned, delved into the realm of recommendations, planning, strategy, professional development. So, when you have a relationship like that, instead of utilizing a bid process, utilize a request for proposals process. So, the twenty-five, twenty-six year that we're in now was the first year that we did that for contracted security services. We received two proposals, you can see the timeline associated here. But they were evaluated by cost, services approach, prior experiences of the firm, professional qualifications, demonstrated capabilities, firm's history, and also client references. So, at the July fifteenth meeting, the Board of Education approved the proposal for Black Hawk Security and Investigations.
Before we advance to the next slide, I'd like to introduce our partners from Monroe County Sheriff's Office. Again, I'd like to turn this portion of the presentation over to Captain Kreiser, Lieutenant Bay, and Deputy Thurston to offer some support to our community around how they support us with safeguarding and also speak to some of the things that have transpired in our district over the past several weeks. Thank you.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me? Alright, so, first of all, I was appointed captain over at A Zone starting in July. I've been doing this job for twenty-one years. Half of my career I've done in A Zone, which is Penfield, Pittford, Perrington. Got the opportunity to work with some of your husbands, some of the people in the crowd here through training, Ted Wilson through training at the academy. So, I'm pretty familiar with, you know, everybody here and what this district is about. Real quick, the superintendent asked me to come here today because we've been getting a lot of questions about what our involvement was in September, what our role is, and kind of what we do to help with the school. First of all, we are here to protect all the kids in Penfield. No matter who agrees with anything in this room or who you are, we will always be there to protect them and the people here. I can promise you that. Throughout my, throughout my career, I have arrested somebody one day and then went and protected them the next. That doesn't matter to us, that's not our job, right? We don't, we don't care who disagrees with who. We're here to do the right thing and make sure everybody's safe. So, for us, as far as this district goes, our routine operations are, while school's in session, you should see an increased presence anyway. Where people are is where we need to be, okay? That's what our deputies are told to do, that's what they do routinely. They walk through your schools to interact with the kids when they're not in trouble because the only time they see this uniform shouldn't be when they've done something wrong. They do a good job of that, they're always there, they're there to listen, but they're also there when there's a problem, right? So, if the school calls us or if an individual calls us, we'll respond to the school and we will handle the situation, whether it's through intervening and stopping a fight or just mediating a dispute between two students. I've asked the guys, especially in the wake of September, to increase the patrols and special attentions at the schools. All of you have seen it, some of you have seen me, I've been approached by some of you out in the parking lot. You've seen increased foot patrols. Not only because we were concerned about a threat, but we wanted to ease some of the concerns of the parents. Some people were eased by our presence, other people were a little bit more heightened by that presence, wondering why there were so many police there. And it really was because we wanted to make sure we were in a position to protect the kids in case there was something we didn't see or we didn't know, okay? A lot of times too, you know, you'll see there's two or three police officers in the school. Sometimes it's because you have dare officers teaching classes. At the same time, somebody else stops in to walk the halls, see what's going on. The more present they are in a critical incident, the more well-versed they are in your school's layout, the quicker we can respond and help. So, you will see that, we will never stop doing that. Our partnership with Penfield School is always professional, we will always be there for them. I can tell you, when I got here in July, due to my familiarity with Ted Wilson, he reached out to me and said, hey, Matt, I want you to come out here. I want you to meet with me and the superintendent, get on a first-name basis and understand what we got going on here. On September third, we scheduled a meeting for September eighteenth, which coincidentally was the day that this threat came in. We were not the ones who got this threat. And that question was asked, why did the state troopers investigate this threat? And the reason for that is, any threat that's reported through the national database or the FBI online goes through the state troopers. It all comes through there. Normally, that would be vetted out and sent to the local agency. In this case, personnel changes it to state troopers. There was some miscommunication about the people that were there. They started with the investigation because they felt it needed immediate attention and they went to the house and they dealt, and they intervened to make sure that they could head off any threat or any threatening messages that were received. At that point, in the morning, on my way to the meeting, I received a call from Deputy Thurston and said, hey, just so you know, the troopers are investigating this, this occurred overnight. You're going to a meeting in Penfield, I thought you should be aware. Well, the school got it about the same time and our meeting kicked off a little bit late. At that point, our direction was, how do we assist the troopers? And our intelligence officers assisted the troopers with whatever they needed. We made sure that they were treating it how we would treat it because it is our local district and we kept in constant contact with them. During the meeting with the superintendent, we both agreed that this outlines why we need a close relationship, why the school district and sheriff's office need to work together all the time and keep each other in constant contact. The troopers were doing a great job with the investigation, they really did take it seriously. We got partners at Rock Tech involved to thoroughly vet out this threat. And if you're not familiar with Rock Tech, it's not just police. You have business partners, you have medical health, mental health professionals, you have school districts, colleges, everybody involved to help evaluate threats, threat assessments, and try to stop these threats from happening or curb behavior that's going to happen in the future. It's really the only way we're going to get it. So, that's how the troopers got involved, that was done. Some questions that came to me, while I was out in parking lots, parents would approach me with concerns. I was there for all of those concerns when the parents approached me and I always will be. You got to understand, we know that emotions are high. A lot of law enforcement officers have kids that go to your districts and they were calling me and their emotions were high. We investigate similar threats to this on a routine basis. And we always fully investigate them, we always treat them as credible right from the start, right? Until we deem they're not. When juveniles are involved, you're going to get limited information from the police and from the school. That's just the way it is. However, we absolutely would warn the community if we felt there was an active threat or their kids were in danger. We shut down schools for a few inches of snow. We are not going to leave them open when we think somebody's actively targeting your children. You can be arrested, sure of that. So, some of the questions that I've gotten, is there any politics at play as to why the troopers were involved? I believe I explained that, there was none. We all worked very closely together, we all know each other. In this case here, it was a miscommunication and they started running with the ball and they kept going with it and they did a good job. Everybody was in the loop, alright? What information would we put out in these situations? Probably pretty similar to what you already had at the beginning of this and we knew there was more. We know there was some curiosity as to more details of what was going on. We won't comment on a trooper investigation. I would never do that because that's like me spreading gossip, right? If I'm not involved, I'm not going to do that. And sometimes, some of the informations that get leaked out, are leaked out of context, it happened during interviews. And sometimes, that prevents people involved from cooperating with us, which is what we need, especially when mental health is involved and you have a juvenile who is probably not going to remain wherever they go for the rest of their lives. So, we need that constant contact, we need to be able to have that relationship. The other thing, a lot of people say, well, what do you guys do in these situations? We respond to whoever reports these situations, we get the initial details. We try to vet out who's making threats, who's, where are they coming from? Once we find that out, we make contact and intervene with that person. Oftentimes, it'll be a fit person who comes with us to evaluate their mental health, why these threats are going on. We try to vet, we try to go ahead and see, do they have the ability to carry these threats out? How close were they to carrying threats out? Is this a cry for help? What do we need to do to intervene with this person? From that point, a plan's put in place and we act on it. What we won't do is ever disclose in a public forum what our tactics are when it comes to dealing with a school threat that we believe is in progress. The reason for that is, you people in this room are not the only ones listening. We don't always know where that's coming from and we're not going to help somebody get details of our response so they can overcome it if a threat occurs. We do provide safety and response to all the schools and I know a lot of you are Penfield parents, but what you didn't see is, in A Zone, we also had increased presence in Pittford and Fairport as well because they're part of our district. We're always prepared for what we don't see. So, some parents said, well, why such a heavy presence if there's no active threat right now? And I kind of answered that, right? We're trying to ease concerns, but we don't know what we don't know. And at the early stages of any statements made against students, our first response is to always increase presence so we're there in case we miss something. This was a trooper investigation, our immediate response was, I want everybody at the schools. I called people from downtown community engagement. I said, hey, if they're free, have them come out here. So, you saw a lot of people. You saw, you saw me out there personally, you saw everybody out there at some point or another, especially during pickup and drop-off. That's when most of the kids are there, that's when we want to be seen, we want them to know we're there for them. Why is there a larger police presence at times than others? Could be a number of reasons for that. Sometimes, you won't see police officers every morning at your drop-off. There's car, you know, drop-off times are busiest times for traffic. You have accidents, you have all sorts of injuries, it's a very busy time of the day. So, sometimes those resources get diverted, but we always try to make sure we're hitting some of the schools. And we don't want to be predictable, alright? If you see the same person in the same spot every day and you're looking to do harm, you know where to look for them and how to get around them. So, we try to avoid doing that. You also have a few private schools in Penfield that requested our assistance too because those parents were concerned and national incidents created a lot of concern around that. So, we had those, we also were there and you saw us on Gabhart and you saw us over at Finney. We're all over the place on those. I know I can't answer everybody's questions, but I can tell you that throughout my entire career here, anytime a parent has come to me with a question, if I could provide that information, I would. We'll continue to do that at the sheriff's office. And then unfortunately, there's going to be times where I can't just provide information. There's stuff I'm not privileged to give you and I won't do it. So, that's it for me. Todd, do you have anything?
Go after that one. I'll just introduce myself real quick, I'm Deputy Thurston with the sheriff's office. I've got twenty-three years in with the sheriff's office. I'm the community engagement deputy for the east side of the county, which covers Pittford, Penfield, Perrington. I do sit in on a threat assessments with those school districts as well, as well as a liaison for St. John Fisher and Nazareth. We always operate in the unknown, right? So, we don't know when the next threat is coming or where it's going to be coming from. But when they do show up, and I'm not talking about this case here, we investigate them the fullest. Again, I'm not going to define what our tactics are, but in threat assessment, we want to find the person of concern, we want to mitigate the threat. I also work with a fit member from the Office of Mental Health. We follow up as well for the person of concern, make sure that they're getting services that they need. Can't answer all the questions here today, but that's kind of what I do. I do attend all the threat assessment meetings, just so you're aware.
And last but not least, I guess the biggest thing is, is there still a threat to the community, right? That's what everybody was worried about. We're not going to give you specific details on where the person who's involved in this incident is. We can tell you that right now, there's not a concern that they're out here in the community and we can tell you that they're getting the help that they need and hopefully that's long-term. But if a threat does present itself, we will inform the public when that happens.
So, as we close this portion of the superintendent's report, I just want to reiterate that the district has been extremely responsive to the threat that was initially reported to us by the New York State Police. We continue to be intentional and planful in strengthening our internal infrastructure for safety and security. And I'm extremely proud of all of the work that we've done and more so for the strong relationships and partnerships that we have, beginning with our Board of Education, with members of the senior cabinet, with the Office of Safety and Security by Mr. Wilson. He leads a very, very great safety and security team. And then, our partnership with Black Hawk Security and as you've just heard from our partners from Monroe County Sheriff's Office, they have been integral to supporting each of our campuses and supporting us through this very difficult time. I also want to acknowledge how difficult this has been for families again and for our faculty and staff. And it's never easy when instances like these occur in a school district. And so, that is exactly why we immediately contacted families. We immediately shared the communications that we did and we immediately partnered again with Monroe County Sheriff's Office. As Captain Kreiser said, he was in my office the day that we received the threat and we talked through it at that very moment. And we also talked about how he was going to be very intentional about bringing that extra support and presence to our campus. And that also was made possible because of Mr. Wilson and the relationship that he has with Monroe County Sheriff's Office. So, for all of those reasons, I am greatly appreciative of the partnerships that we have to make sure that we continue to safeguard our district. And we don't take any threat lightly. We have processes in place and as I referenced earlier, we utilize our district code of conduct and support when we're thinking about and managing student behaviors. And so, with that, I am going to now turn it over back to our board president so that we can continue the meeting for the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Potter. Before we move on to public comments, just want to check in and see if you all, board members, have any questions or comments regarding the presentation.
I do.
I would like our, the last question, I would love our partners from Monroe County Sheriff's Office to share why it is important not to post school-related safety information on social media platforms.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
So,
The last question on the slide.
The last question.
Gotcha. Yeah, I mean, I can't tell the public what to post and what not to post, but I can tell you it has a negative effect when some of these school-related safety issues are posted publicly and people who, not everybody has the same intention you have for your children. And there are some people who aren't in this district. And there are some people who aren't in this district who just wanna see everybody fight and wanna twist things. I would say, you know, while you're posting things, you should think about what the effect it has and is it really helping the security of your kids? Or is it something you're just venting because you're upset with a decision that was made? And that's what I would end with.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, but can I just make a quick comment? I don't have a question. I just wanna thank you all for being here this evening. I think the community appreciate and the Board definitely appreciates the partnership. I know when I send my kid to school every day, I send my child to school hoping and praying that he's safe every day. And I know the anxiety that that produces and I know this partnership sitting up here at this table helps alleviate a lot of anxiety for our community and our families. So thank you for partnering with us. We appreciate you.
Alright, so we're gonna move on to public comments. So individuals who choose to participate in public comment, period, should note that they agree to and are bound by terms outlined in Policy 1515, which includes conducting themselves in a civil manner consistent with the district's code of conduct. Reframing from comments related to specific person, personal, student, including names and other identifiable information such as job titles, grade levels, school, etc. Reframing from slanderous statements, obscene language, threats, violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice. In order to protect individual rights, comments that are personal in nature should be brought to the attention of the Board's President and/or superintendent privately or in writing. Generally, the Board does not respond to items presented by or questions raised by speakers during public comments. The superintendent or the Board President may provide a response in writing where it's warranted. The superintendent or the Board President may determine the need to correct inaccurate and/or misinformation that is shared during public comments. Should individuals act in a manner inconsistent with the district protocol, the policy, and/or the code of conduct, they may lose their privilege of the floor at the meeting and future meetings. Individuals should, individuals scheduled to speak must limit their public comments to no more than three minutes. And will first be recognized by the School Board President for you to come up to the table. And once you get there, please make sure you give your name and/or if you're from an organization, if that, you know, applies to you, and a brief description of the topic that you'd like to address. So, right now, our first speaker is Sarah Gardner.
Hi, thank you. Sarah Gardner, hi. Good to see you. I'm a, oh, three, okay, sorry. I'm a parent and I'm gonna talk about safety. Wait, what did I have to say?
Run back the clock, okay.
My name, Sarah Gardner.
And your topic.
I'm a parent and topic is leaked emails and district documents.
Thank you.
With safety. Okay, thank you. I'd like to share my perspective as both a parent and a mental health professional. Over the past month, I've been really troubled by the way that our community has responded to the threat in September. It's really concerning that our internal district emails and documents have been leaked and circulating on social media. Unfortunately, I've personally experienced these leaks last year in an email that was sent and shared online without my consent. Given that the list of the recipients from last year's email was a small number of union board building representatives, union president, superintendent, and just the Board of Education, so a small group. And knowing that that email ended up on social media without my consent is very troubling. It violates trust and our parents in the district need to be able to trust our schools. So while I stand by what I wrote, nothing that I write, usually I try to sign my name to everything and I'm okay with it being shared publicly. But the real issue is that parents need to be able to trust the district. So in addition to that, going to September 18th incident, I spoke directly with New York State Police that following Monday and their statements provided reassurance and were far more credible than the unverified and often hurtful speculation that spread online. They told me that they were also investigating what they described as false information circulating on social media. Those rumors and false information were upsetting, but for me, what's more upsetting is how our community responded to them on social media. I worry that our collective response could cause long-term harm, not just here in Penfield, but in all school districts watching us. The next time a student is struggling with violent or intrusive thoughts and finds the courage to tell a parent, we need to be sure that that parent still feels safe turning to the school and turning to law enforcement or medical professionals for help. Our children and our families must be safe when seeking help. We need to trust that when you do seek help, you won't be met with fear-mongering, shame, or viral misinformation. As a community, we can do better and we must. Let's not let a few loud voices drown out the greater responsibility we all share to promote safety, compassion, and trust. And please stop leaking internal communications and documents. And certainly never leak parent emails. That would be helpful. Yeah, it just kinda deepens the damage and, you know, erodes trust in our community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Megan Callen. Megan Callen.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Megan Callen. My address is on record. And I am speaking, of course, to Safety and Security specifically around my experience with it in terms of mental health in our district. I'm a Penfield Schools parent with one child in high school currently and another in an elementary school. Safety and security are ongoing priorities for every school district and Penfield is not unique in that. What matters is that I see our district taking them very seriously and continuing to do the work. It must remain a constant improvement. I've been asking my own children directly how they feel at school and both say, without hesitation, that they feel comfortable and safe. I feel the same. That doesn't mean that everything has been easy, nor is it something that we take for granted. With great vulnerability from myself and my child, I want to share an example. I expect that while I'm sharing it publicly to frame my message, that others will treat it as a personal matter, even if it isn't private any longer. My youngest son has significant dysregulation challenges over the years, situations that have sometimes required safety restraints, which in case, in his case, often function more like sensory compression to help him be safe and feel safe. He has eloped multiple times. These are the kinds of moments that test a system, that test a people. And yet I can honestly say that my experience as a parent has been overwhelmingly positive. Every time something happens, I'm notified immediately. His school administrators reach out, not to defend or deflect, but to partner. We collaborate and they bring expertise and compassion that add a real value. I bring my expertise as his parent and together we work through it. At the end of the day, we're all doing our best to support these children and I've seen that effort met with patience, dignity, and grace. When my son was even younger, there often wasn't a certified adult in the building trained to safely administer restraints. I would have to rush from work and engage myself. Today, there are seven trained and certified through evidence-based therapeutic crisis intervention or TCI. That is progress. It might sound scary to some, but it is progress. Not abstract policy progress, but human progress that directly impacts children. To parents and caregivers of children with different needs, I see you. And to the caring people in my children's schools, I feel seen. Now my son is a fifth-grade bus safety. He is loving it. And I love this program because it engages the children directly in a sense of shared responsibility for their community safety. And thank you to Mrs. Stiversky at Scribner for your leadership on this. That's what I mean when I say I'm proud of this district. The district isn't just a logo. It's not an office or a policy manual. It's the people. It's the caring adults who show up every day, the ones in direct relationships with my kids and the ones behind the scenes building the systems that make their days calmer and safer. I'm grateful to the work of PCSD that they have done and continue to do to uplift mental health and social emotional wellness for our students.
Your time is up. I have to cut you off.
Thank you.
Board President. Board President. Board President. Might I remind the community to not make references to names of our employees within our district?
We also need to not do that, too. So our next speaker is Becca Johnson.
Hello, good evening. Okay, when the time, I'm, I should say, I'm Becca Johnson and I'm a parent in the district and I'm also Penfield SEPTA, so Special Education PTA President, appointed in July, so fairly new. I think I'm ready. I wanna begin by acknowledging my actions at the last board meeting and say that speaking after adjournment is certainly not a precedent I meant to set. But I certainly thank you for revising the bylaws to allow public comment going forward on issues that aren't on agenda items. I think we're all here because we want the same thing, schools where every child, educator, and staff members feel safe. When parents ask for more safety, we're not asking for more enforcement. We're actually asking for more connection. A relationship-based safety model that builds consistency, trust, and trauma-informed care across our schools. Research from Cornell, RAND, and the National Disability Rights Network show that school adopting this approach see a 40% reduction in crisis interventions for students with disabilities, a 25% decrease in mental health crises, and stronger student-staff trust. These roles don't replace counselors or social workers. They complement them. With New York's average counselor-to-student ratio nearing 350 to 1 and our psychologist-to-student ratios averaging 630 to 1, our mental health teams across our state are stretched thin. Relationship-based safety staff are proactive, greeting students in the hallways, at drop-off and in cafeterias, the places where connection prevents escalation. For students with disabilities and regulation challenges like my daughter, those everyday moments can mean everything. These students need trusted adults. We know this. According to the CDC, students who feel connected to even one trusted adult in school are 66% less likely to experience depression, self-harm, suicidal thoughts. That's the human side of prevention. And I wanna be clear, our district's sentries do their jobs well. They keep doors secure, check IDs, and monitor who enters our schools. They had eight hours of training, we were shared with today, and 16 hours post that training, and I think that we need much, much more than just sentries. They recognize faces, but that's not the same as being known. I just introduced my daughter to her sentry by name this week to make sure that she knew that sentry's name and that he introduced himself to her as well. Sitting behind a desk or a camera is not relationship-based security. It's procedural safety and our kids need both. When schools intentionally build these models, there's a 30% drop in behavioral incidents as well. According to the U.S. Secret Service, 81% of averted school attacks were prevented because staff members had relationships with trusted students or with trusted adults. The long-term and quicker to implement solution must be relational, community-based officers. Studies show this embedded safety model where trusted adults are part of the daily culture are what prevents violence. I'm running out of time. So, the last thing I'll say is we have a lot of work to do. We've become a microcosm for the greater issues in our country.
Becca, your time is up.
Thank you, and I appreciate you listening. And I'll look forward to my meeting with Dr. Potter and I appreciate you the opportunity to speak with me further.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Next, we have Monica Welling.
Hi, I'm Monica Welling. My topic is adding AI security. I'm a parent of two, of two elementary school kids. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My research has led me to suggest investing in technology, not hiring more people. I would like to request adding another critical layer of protection to our schools. Specifically, I propose implementing either Intellisys or Zero Eyes, an AI-powered surveillance and weapon detection system that provides instant alerts to law enforcement the moment a potential threat is identified inside or outside. Our current security measures, Black Hawk Patrol outside, security visitor vestibules, staff watch cameras, and ID access controls have done a good job safeguarding the exterior of our schools from extruders. However, these systems do little to protect against a threat that originates inside the building such as armed students or staff members. This internal vulnerability remains one of the greatest risks to our students' safety to date. Adding an intelligent detection layer like Intellisys or Zero Eyes could mean the difference between immediate intervention and irreversible tragedy. It provides law enforcement and school personnel precious seconds that can save lives. I think the current TAP app for mass staff notification seems cumbersome and takes time. And it's not, well, we can, not enough when it comes to our children. This is not a question of whether we can find the funding. It's a question of prioritizing the safety of our children. Now, I strongly believe this technology represents a proactive life-saving step forward for our district, much-needed parental peace of mind, and I urge us to explore it without delay. We also shouldn't be imposed to adding additional safety measures such as metal detectors and/or SROs to our district protocols in the near future as well. This technology will hopefully enforce transparency for all, students, staff, security teams, parents, and administrators. In Buffalo, Zero Eyes, in September 4th, 2024, artificial intelligence is one of the latest tools being used in Western New York schools to combat gun violence. It's a software used at Niagara Falls High School, Grand Island Schools. I think you mentioned that you work with St. John Fisher College that use Zero Eyes. And I reached out to the VP today and I have some information. Everybody wants to look at it for contact information to look into this further. And research from Zero Eyes suggests that most school shootings, a gun is visible for an average of seven minutes before shots are fired.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is John Feathers.
Hello, thank you for having me tonight. I'm here tonight because there are serious and growing concerns about safety, professionalism, and accountability in the Penfield School District. Concerns that continue to be ignored. Let's start with the issues of inconsistent misplaced security measures. It's hard not to notice the excessive security and metal detectors used during school board meetings. The message seems clear, protect the adults in the room, but where is that same level of concern for our students? Sporting events, which bring in crowds and often happen outside normal school hours, have little to no security presence. Students, staff, and families attend without the protections the Board insists on for itself. During the regular school day, access points are loosely monitored at best. Anyone who's spent time in these buildings knows it's too easy to walk in unchecked. If security is truly a priority, it shouldn't start where our most vulnerable population spends their time, not where board members feel uncomfortable being challenged. Even more disturbing is what's happening outside these walls on social media. Policymakers and community leaders are sharing Facebook posts that include the names, phone numbers, and emails of private residents, people who simply dared to speak at meetings or voice concerns. These posts are unprofessional and dangerous. They have led to harassment, threats, and public intimidation. Is that the environment we're creating here? One where silence is safer than speaking up? And unfortunately, that fear, ex-... And unfortunately, that fear extends into the classroom. Teachers and staff are scared to speak out, not just about curriculum or policy, but about real safety concerns. That fear creates blind spots. It means potential threats go unreported. It means decisions are made without critical input from the people who actually work with our students every day. A culture of silence is a security risk, and it's growing. Lately, something as simple yet dangerous as staff parking in fire lanes is happening on a regular at our schools. It may seem minor, but it blocks emergency access and creates a serious hazard if crisis ever occurs. Again, where is the enforcement? Where is the accountability? If we are truly committed to student safety, then we must stop being reactive, performative, or selective. We need consistent ethical and community-wide policies, and that starts with leadership that leads by example, not intimidation and retaliation. And thank you. I'm done. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Okay, before we have the next speaker come up, Dr. Potter is going to correct some inaccuracies.
Yes, I'd like to correct some misinformation regarding the comment for, thank you, I'm sorry, the comment for parking in fire lanes. There was actually a photograph posted that my car was parked illegally. That was not my vehicle. So whomever took the picture and posted it on social media, that was not a picture of my vehicle, as was just referenced this evening. So I just feel it's important to clarify that misinformation. It's important to clarify the misinformation.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you guys to, I'm gonna ask the audience to stop responding, please. So our next, thank you, Dr. Potter. So our next speaker is Louisa Khalil.
Good evening. My name is Louisa, and I'm speaking on behalf as a parent regarding safety and transparency. Over the past several weeks, many parents, as myself, have raised concerns about the lack of clarity and communication surrounding school safety. Ten days ago, I sent an email to Dr. Potter detailing, outlining these concerns, including unanswered safety questions and the growing anxiety amongst families. I have not received a response. At the same time, the district continues to issue written statements assuring families that communication is transparent and inclusive. Yet those messages ring hollow, and when actions don't reflect the words, words without action, and meetings without meaningful actions. Sorry, lost my space. And meetings without meaningful engagement, such as the last BOE meeting, only continue to erode trust. Parents are not the only ones who feel unheard. Many teachers are struggling to have their voices represented for unknown reasons. The growing number of teacher wish lists is evidence that not all educators have had an equal opportunity to share their needs or perspectives. True transparency and equality means valuing every voice, including those who see the situation maybe a little bit differently than each of you. It's become increasingly difficult for families to discern what's real and what's fake news within even our own district communications and online discussions. When parents were told not to listen to community conversations, it deepens the mistrust. Transparency means sharing facts openly and consistently and not discouraging the dialogue. Safety culture and tone matter. When board members appear disengaged as parents speak, or when genuine feedback is treated as an inconvenience, it damages the equitable culture this district stands for. Today, we're creating a culture of chaos, one that we do not want our children to be a part of. When reading recent communications from the board, many begin to question its integrity and ability to make sound decisions, not just about safety, but around every decision leadership makes. We built our home in Penfield because we believed in the integrity of this district. I still believe that that partnership is possible, but only if transparency is restored. Voices are valued equally, and actions align with the words we hear. Tonight was a great example of that first step forward, being able to hear from you and hear about the safety and conditions, but it's only the first step. Optics matter in times of community uncertainty. So how does the board plan to continue to restore that trust? I'm not here to simply criticize. I'm offering to be a part of the solution. Parents in this community, myself included, are ready to dedicate the time, effort, and resources to strengthen transparency efforts and safety. Build a committee. Invite those who may see the situation differently to the table. Share reports openly from those who may see it differently than you. Allow equal voices to be heard so that together we can model true transparency and begin to rebuild the trust this community deserves. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jonathan LaRue.
Good evening. I'd like to start with a quote from my 10-year-old daughter. There was a man without pants running outside my school, so we finally got two security guards today. I'm here to advocate for a proven step to strengthen student safety, placing trained school resource officers inside of our schools. SROs are sworn officers with specialized training in crisis intervention, threat assessment, and de-escalation. Stationed on-site, they build relationships with students, detect early warning signs, and can respond in the critical one-to-two-minute window. Secret Service and FBI reports show that 83% of school attacks end in under five minutes. SROs have stopped many in under 60 seconds. Faster responses mean lives saved in an emergency. Currently, we rely on contractors stationed inside their cars and parking lots. While they do provide a layer of security, they lack the authority, training, integration to address active threats effectively. We can do better for our students and our teachers. A couple points for consideration. In the past five years, I looked hard. I could not find any instances of attacks targeting school boards or administration nationwide. In contrast, there was over 1,300 gun-related incidents on school grounds. I see over a dozen security professionals in this meeting tonight. Our children deserve that same protection, consummate with the risks. I also ask for clarity on the Black Hawk security contract. I saw tonight that it was signed less than three months ago, and yet my FOIA request was booted for two months. A public record search shows that the owners and the company had significant leans against them for not paying either federal or state taxes. And how do we know then they can be counted on to carry the property liability insurance? What is the financial risk to Penfield schools and local taxpayers? New York law charges this board with transparency, responsiveness, and ensuring high-quality education, starting with safety. Most board members were elected by fewer than 5% of Penfield's 40,000 residents. Open, inclusive governance strengthens trust. I encourage fuller adherence to New York's open meeting law and broader community engagement. In summary, I would ask the board to consider, number one, station SROs inside of our schools for faster, more effective responses. Two, align security resources with documented threats. Three, increase transparency in contracting and decision-making. This meeting was very helpful. It's a month late, and without the social media pressure, without the news cameras, and without the repeated inquiries of parents, teachers, staff, and other members of your community, I do not believe this would have happened. I would ask that the board and the administration be more proactive in that in the future. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Leanne Gallimore. Excuse me, sir.
It was gonna be really good, so he's missing out. Leanne Gallimore, from Penfield, obviously. I have two kids in the district. I wish I had seen all these slides before I started, because I would have amended some of this, so I'll try not to be redundant. But I'm speaking here today as a parent, as a mom. I'm not an expert in anything, but I am an expert in loving my kids, and I would do anything for them. This brings me out of my comfort zone, but it's a place where I need to be because I felt like their voices weren't being heard or supported. They're innocent, and I need to protect them. I don't want them to understand what's going on. I want them to feel safe in their schools. And so if I have to be loud or louder for them and then give them a hug and smile, that's what I'll do. We were silenced at the last board meeting. I appreciate the opportunity to speak now, but I wish it didn't take headlines in the news or social media for parents to finally be heard. I'll speak on two different issues: security and communication. I'm asking for more clarity on why we aren't considering having trained SROs in our schools. I saw the slides, but they're not just security guards with six hours of training. They're more than that. They are sworn law enforcement professionals, trained in de-escalation, school safety, and building relationships, but with years of experience. They are mentors, protectors, and partners in prevention. Our students deserve that level of protection and support in their classroom and hallways. So do our hall monitors, our newly-appointed sentries. Or what we see at the meeting today. Our students deserve that same level of protection on the playground. And our teachers and staff deserve it, too. They are educators. They are not security officers, and they should never be the first line of defense in a crisis. I'm insisting on transparency. I saw your slide on what the question's on transparency. Those weren't my questions I sent in. Webster, Fairport, and Penfield have qualifications and standards for their SROs. We don't have that same information. I wouldn't hire a babysitter if I didn't have that information, but right now, I'm letting my kids go to school with that protection that I'm not really sure of the clarification. I'm gonna skip because I've talked long. Based on why today's meeting is even happening, it's clear the community was not satisfied with the initial response to the incident. And parents caused, the communication caused more confusion than reassurance. We must improve on that. We need leadership and security to provide a clear written and step-by-step plan exactly what can we learn from, how we will handle a crisis, and what we need you guys to say is what we can learn from this. All we've said is how great we are. So I'll just end with, we need to look, learn, and lead.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Patrick Turgen. Excuse me. Patrick Turgen.
It's more of an appreciation and thanks for everybody and what they're doing. My name is Patrick Turgen. I live at Cobble 67, Cobble Drive. I'm here today as a dad who's been watching what's been going on lately, and I just want to say that I appreciate what you're doing. It's not an easy task, a lot of criticism, and not a lot of things. I know these past few weeks haven't been easy. There's been a lot of noise, a lot of frustration, unfortunately, a lot of misinformation. Through it all, you've stayed focused on our kids and our schools, and that is what matters. I also believe that you follow the proper procedures and laws every step of the way, even when some people want you to do more than you legally could. It's clear you've communicated as much as possible while still respecting confidentiality and doing things the right way. It takes integrity, and it doesn't always get recognized. As a parent, I just want to say thank you for staying calm, professional, and steady when things around you haven't been. It's clear you care about the district and the people in it, and that means a lot to families like mine. So please know, not everyone here is angry or misled. Many of us truly are grateful for your leadership and your commitment in doing things the right way for our kids. So thank you again.
Thank you. Kathy Lechner.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'd like to talk about the FERPA and safety concerns regarding FERPA. I'm a grandmother, and I live in the district, and two of my grandchildren attend Indian Landing. They absolutely love their school. They're proud of all that they're learning there. They have fun, and they love the community and are glad to be part of it. Children, all children, not just my grandchildren, need safety and they need love all the time. My grandchildren tell me they feel safe at school, and as a grandparent, that, I mean, that means so much. With that said, I'd just like to share a concern about data, privacy, and access to student records in the district specifically related to FERPA. I'm actually a retired nurse, a hospice nurse, and I did spend over a decade working in a different district as a school nurse teacher. So I'm very familiar with HIPAA, FERPA. FERPA applies to the principle of least privilege, meaning school employees should only be granted access to student information necessary to perform their specific job functions. For a basic example, a high school teacher, whether it's an English teacher or a PE teacher, should not have access to an elementary school teacher or students' records. They have absolutely no connection to that child. Recently, a document leaked on social media that included questions from members of the Penfield Teachers Union. One concern listed, "Staff unavailable to view all students in infinite campus seen as a safety issue." The response in the document was simply FERPA. Now, that left me confused. If the district is following FERPA properly and granting access only where necessary, how is that a safety issue? So FERPA was enacted in 1974, and the principle of least privilege has been part of it since '75. So this is not a new thing. Everyone working in education should be very well aware of these standards. So if complying with FERPA is truly a barrier to student safety, that's a serious issue, and I hope the district can clearly explain or address it. But if it's not a barrier and someone is calling it one, that's also very concerning. Either way, I hope that the district will provide clarity to this point, on this point, for the sake of safety and compliance with federal law. Thank you for your time, and I thank you all for the support and guidance and love you provide all of the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly Sweetman. Sorry.
Hi, good evening. My name is Haley Swetman. I grew up right here in Penfield. I attended Indian Landing, Bay Trail, and graduated from Penfield High School. My husband, who is a 19-year veteran with the local police department, and I still live here in Penfield, with our three sons. Our oldest is currently a student in the district. As a Penfield alumna, resident, and parent, I am deeply concerned about the safety of our children and our schools. We live in a time where school violence and credible threats are real, and we must take these risks seriously. The role of a school resource officer is vital, and that position must be filled by an armed, highly-trained professional with law enforcement, tactical, and active shooter experience. An unarmed guard simply cannot respond effectively in a crisis where every second matters. Across the country, districts are investing in new technology like ballistic window protection and reinforced door systems, but those tools only work when the people inside are trained to use them. Currently, Penfield contracts with Black Hawk Security. Yet, parents have received no information about the individual qualifications or experience of the guards assigned to our schools. We have a right to know who is responsible for our children's safety. A basic security certificate is not equivalent to a police officer's background check, tactical training, or psychological screening. Retired or active law enforcement officers bring professionalism, accountability, and the skill to protect. They also bridge the trust gap with parents who want reassurance that trained experts are protecting their kids each day. It's also concerning that much of our district's increased security appears to protect administrative offices, while student areas remain vulnerable. Safety should not be unequal. Our students and teachers deserve the same level of protection as you do. And lastly, there's a picture circulating on social media of a quote displayed in the security office that states, "Stay in your lane and don't swerve into mines because there will be a collision." This does not reflect the collaboration our schools need. Safety requires teamwork, transparency, and shared responsibility, not separation or defensiveness. In conclusion, I urge this district to take immediate proactive steps. Employ armed SROs with verified law enforcement. with verified law enforcement and crisis experience; ensure transparency with parents about who is protecting our children; and advance security measures that protect students and teachers first, not just administrators. Our children's safety cannot wait, and both as a parent and a lifelong member of this community, I ask that we do better together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Gardner.
My name's Jeff Gardner. My son and daughter attend Indian Landing. I wanted to speak to you tonight about the serious concern I have regarding the leaks that were recently posted online. The leaks are internal on emails, if you're not familiar with them, and documents from within the district, and people have taken the opportunity to post these materials on social media. At a minimum, I'm concerned about the lack of, we'll call it confidentiality versus transparency, the ability for good-faith union negotiations to occur and not without fear of being leaked, the fear of staff and HR concerns to not be leaked, but most importantly, my students' personal information, or my son and daughter's personal information being leaked online. This is unacceptable. This gaslighting has to stop. One email in particular, Dr. Potter's message to all district staff, contained 11 attachments outlining district-wide security vulnerabilities and teacher concerns. That information, as you know, is now publicly available online. It can be accessed by anyone, especially people and individuals with a harmful intent. We must acknowledge the seriousness of this breach. Sharing the internal security details with the public, regardless of intent, is dangerous and irresponsible. It undermines the safety efforts that many work hard to support. I urge the district to address this breach with a commitment to making all staff and the unintended consequences and damage that can be caused when sharing internal communications and documents. I don't want to overlook the real security concerns. We've obviously talked about that tonight, and we've had discussions now and in the spring before of passive and active safety security measures. But I think it's fair that most buildings that have experienced active school shooters are down this path as well. These efforts take time, planning, and funding, but now with security vulnerabilities exposed on the internet, we are at a crossroads until the district secures funding necessary to address the specific vulnerabilities that have been made public, and those upgrades are exposed and implemented across all buildings. We were unnecessarily exposed by that leak. I ask that the district provide a presentation for parents, teachers, and staff, and a review of current trends in school violence, both locally and nationally, and how these trends may affect Penfield, and to include an overview of the safety and security measures that the district has explored, and a forum for teachers and parents to contribute their own ideas, and a spirit of collaboration for mutual support, and potentially a survey to gather input on which security options teachers, parents, and staff would like to see the district prioritize, but only after sharing the knowledge and information of all to make informed choices. After all, we all want what's best for our kids and our teachers and our staff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Matt Lincoln. Matt's not here. So that concludes our public comments. So before we adjourn, I would just like to say that I appreciate you all coming. I appreciate the officers being here to just explain the safety measures that were taken. Some of the words that I heard tonight was transparency as well as confidentiality. And I think it's important that we all understand that all of us, every single board member up here, we have either children or grandchildren in the district. And all of us care a lot about safety, not for just our children, but for all the children in the district. That's why we are all here. That's why we are serving. So I think that I want to remind the public that it's important to understand the difference between confidentiality and transparency, because I think that we all want to make sure that we all are protecting children. So even if children make a mistake in our district, they are still our students, and that's important, because I think that I would expect, and you all should expect, the same level of protection if it were your child. And so I just want you guys to leave with that and also understand that we all have a child that we also love and care about that's attending this district. So with that, I'm gonna ask board members any questions or comments? So can I have a first emotion and a second to adjourn the meeting at 8:13 PM? So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Meeting's adjourned.